Ready to go?
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, Leah. So, good morning, everyone. This is Tuesday, October 25th, and this is the meeting of the regular meeting of the Finance Committee. And we have a call to order with an established quorum here. And move on to the chairman's report. I don't have the chairman's report per se, other than to do, number one, to say it's nice to see everyone's face, not having met over the last couple of months. And as you know, we've had a lot of things going on as far as the district is concerned. And although there were financial things involved, it was also a process that was very limited in scope and the number of folks that were participating as it was going through its maturing process. So I, I, there is going to be a formal presentation on everything at the board meeting, the second board meeting in November. And so there'll be all of the participating folks in that to be available to provide information. As an, as an end product, what we have in place is been executed and we have $12.1 million available to us to do the at least most heavily required upgrade items related to the wastewater plant. And the genesis of that was a whole process setting up, of course, the rate review and getting the footings underneath us to be able to have the revenue flow on the wastewater rates to sustain being able to pay for obtaining the, the $12.1 million, which we did through certificates of participation, which is kind of a a method similar to bond selling, except that it's, we, we can't, we can't do that as special district. And so there's a methodology for organizations like special districts to be able to do that. So there were lots of people involved. There was the underwriter who was Oppenheimer, the trustee, who is the bank of New York Mellon. And various other supporting folks to that process, as well as, of course, each one of those contributors had legal counsel associated with it too. So you can imagine that the paperwork was pretty extensive in it. We also, to be able to accomplish this, had to obtain a standard and poor's rating, which the district received an A minus rating, which was, was excellent, particularly since it's taken us a couple of years to get ourselves established well. And Ms. Duffield frankly was as responsible for a lot of that, being able to happen, to get all the formalized processes in place and, and get all of her reporting features lined up and getting a track record toward those. So in addition to that, we also took out some type of insurance that raised our rating to a double A. So we went out on the street with the double A certificate, which resulted in a very good response. We, we were over by four or six times in what the initial offering was in terms of folks interested in certain ranges of the bonds over 30 years because they are segmented. Some of them are short, some of them are longer. And so that allowed us to get well oriented as far as the the percentage that we are offering on the bonds. So that could be looked at and then taken back to the, the subscribers to see how many held on at that rate. So there was a lot of that information. But personally, for me, it was fascinating because it was not a process I had gone through before. And myself and Director Dean were working directly with the, the folks within the district, as well as, of course, all of the contributing parties to the process. So, yes.
What was, what was the final rate?
Well, the, the rate, the rate is something that is segmented over time. So there isn't a, there isn't a rate. And I know that they're going to, rather than my explaining it and probably misstating it in some way, I, the presentation is going to happen with the board on the, I believe it's November 17th. We'll be addressing some of that unless Ms. Duffield, certainly you were involved in the process. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Sorry, I lost my cursor. I'm like, oh, how do I have me? So they were, the interest yields were four, mid-four, low fives. They just kind of fluctuated throughout the the maturity of the loan. So I don't know, it's still kind of overwhelming the whole process. So I, I think what that means to us is our interest rate changes through the years. But, you know, again, we'll have to make sure that that's true. You know, we have hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents that we've reviewed for the closing and one of those, I don't know that I've seen the final amortization schedule. I'm sure it's embedded in one of those documents somewhere. But we'll have that formal schedule that will pull out of all those documents and be able to know what the interest rate is at any given time.
Thank you.
And apparently, this was, it's beyond my scope of reference, but the, the folks who were handling the bond offering were delighted that it happened on that day. Apparently, the, the day that that offering happened, the, the bond mark was very receptive and we, you know, by, by inference, ended up doing very well because of that and because of the over subscriptions when the initial offering went. And being able to go back, of course, we have, we have a set fixed amount we're, we're paying. So there isn't that you're not going to see wild fluctuations in terms of what we we have to pay. The, the first year, it's two interest payments a year and one of the principal. And our first year, we have, because of it being in the fiscal years, we don't have a two interest payments. We only have one and the first principal doesn't happen until the following year. So we've got a little bit of breathing room also in that. So I, unless there's, I, I, I feel that I can't answer all the questions that you may have in that, to be able to answer some of them need to kind of wind your way through the documentation also. For your knowledge, both myself and Director Dean went through and participated and read all of the documents and we were able to provide some feedback and ask some questions. We were well represented legally also, not only within the the structure of the finance group that we were working with, but also with Mr. Carmel and his organization. Cheryl?
I have a question. The interest rate, is it based on draws?
Because you're No, no, that's certificates of participation or internally. Yeah, no. No, no, we don't, it, it doesn't change depending on how much we are accessing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Well, then why don't we move on with the, unless there are any other questions, we'll move on with the rest of the with the agenda. Uh, the next item in, and I need to I did not have both screens up, so I wasn't seeing if there was there were attendees. There are no attendees. All right. So the, the next item is the ad hoc subcommittee reports and to the best of my knowledge, in the listing of the subcommittee existing subcommittees, remaining subcommittees, there probably aren't any communications that anyone has related to anything. I think we'll probably all closed out on all of them and we'll take a look at that list later on, unless anyone else feels that that isn't the case. Okay. A public comment. As I mentioned, we don't have any attendees right now. So we will move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a single item and that relates to the minutes of July 11th. There are several meetings we haven't had because of the process of things that have been going on. So the consent agenda just wasn't sufficient to be calling a meeting of the committee. And for that reason, we've got a July 11th, 2022 to be able to take to consent. Are there any changes, corrections? Right, seeing none. Do I hear a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second, thank you, a second, Marvin, second, thank you. Um, let's see, we don't have I'd be do, I'd be doing the roll call. Okay, Ms. Maher? Mr. Corn?
I.
Ms. McDowell?
Hi.
Ms. Seagler?
Since I wasn't present, I abstain.
Thank you. And Ms. Christman?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. So the consent agenda, 3A, 2A, is approved, 401, one standing due to no attendance at that meeting. All right, we'll move on to regular business and
Cindy?
Yes.
In the, in the package we got, and I can't recall back that far, but it, it also has minutes for July 26th. Do you guys have that in your package?
No, I just have the one consent agenda.
Well, the one consent agenda has two items to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second sentence. So just to be clear, I mean, I'm, I can, we can motion that with it, but I just realized.
Okay. Uh, let's go ahead. What I will do is act to restate it since both are recorded under a single item in the consent agenda. This is consideration for the, for approval of the July 11th joint meeting and the July, July 26th Finance Committee Regular Meeting. And
So I moved to approve.
Any adjustments, corrections are, okay, and Ms. Maher, okay, you're moving for that. All right. And Mr. Corn?
Second.
Second, all right. Right. Uh, Mr. Seagler?
Well, since I wasn't present for one of them, I will have to abstain.
And Ms. McDowell?
Hi.
And Ms. Christman?
Hi.
Okay. 401. Thank you for pointing that out. I appreciate that, Mary. Right, moving on to regular business. First item we have is 3A. And that is review of our first quarter budget report and staff recommendation. And so I don't know whether Ms. Fritz or Ms. Duffield will be making the presentation. So to whom do we direct?
I, I will be making the presentation.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Nice to be my first presentation as the finance manager for the district on the first quarter budget report. And so this report is reviewing activity from July 1st, 2022 through September 30th, the first quarter of our fiscal year. And I'd like to take a moment on page 10, just to review the report and what we're looking at here. It's good to give a little refresher. I know you've all seen it numerous times, but we are showing a column that has the original budget that was approved and for the fiscal year. Then the current total budget column will be that amount plus any budget adjustments that have been made throughout the year. Period activity will be representative of September, anything that happened in the month of September. And fiscal activity will be all inclusive of everything from July through September. And the encumbrance column represents funds that have been committed to specific vendors or specific expense codes. And the fate, the variance favorable and unfavorable column will show a negative balance for a positive net income, can be a little confusing, and a positive total in that column would represent an overall deficit for that fund. These deficits can sometimes be attributed to planned reserve expenditures, so it's not necessarily something that we're not aware of or have planned for. Finally, the percent remaining column will show us how much of the budget that we have left to spend. So that can be a little bit confusing too. On that page six, you can see for the revenue column, for instance, we have a 98% left of revenue to collect. And we have expended 79% of our budget. So I think that's all I had on that. And
Mr. Seagler?
Yeah, just, just I think the 79% says that we've actually spent 21% of the budget and 79 remaining. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Yes, that is exactly right. Okay, so then to the staff report, I would just like to go into, starting at the staff report that so far this year, the board has approved one budget adjustment for the Santa Rosa well, number four replacement project, and that is for $75,000. Two additional budget reallocations have gone before the Resource and Infrastructure Committee. And they are for replacement of blowers that were damaged during a PG&E power fluctuation and an overage on the secondary water replacement projects. And we are recommending that we reallocate funds from the lift station project to cover those amounts. And the blowers are also getting money from insurance to help cover those costs. So so that is the activity that we're bringing before to the committee. And one thing I would like to point out also is in addition, the CIP list and reallocation requests were reviewed, I think I said that, by, sorry, the Resource and Infrastructure Committee. But I would like to draw your attention before we get into the report to page 16. And I don't know if any of you noticed on page 16, there's budget adjustments and they all have the same description. We're doing a lot of fuel station computer replacements. These budget adjustments are made with the project carry forward approval by the board. So they, they approved to carry forward projects from the previous year. This was our first year entering these projects in Tyler. And so this is a software issue where we made in a budget adjustment and we made that adjustment on one budget entry. And this budget report is pulling the same description for each line item. So what I did to, to help for this, we're trying to fix it. We're working with Tyler to see if we can get the budget report to pull the correct description. If not, we're going to have to manually go in, reverse those and then put individual entries in with the proper descriptions. But for this meeting, to help you all decipher on page 64, I have included the projects that were approved by the board to be carried forward. And on that list, I have each you can see the fuel station computer replacement is on the top of the list for the fire station. And that is the description that was pulled all the way for all those projects. But I have the dollar amounts as well as what account code it belongs to. So you can try and if you find the account code and look in the funds, you can see what the actual project actually is and what it translates to. So I apologize for that. It's, it takes a little going back and forth, but all of those, we know that it's an error and we're trying to fix it. But all the numbers are in there correctly and are representative of this, this list that was approved by the board. Um, okay.
So Ms. Fritz, just for your reference, and maybe this is just my copy, but the capital improvement program page, so this would be 60, 61 and 62. Unfortunately, didn't print in a reduced format. And so I don't have visibility to those pages as a whole.
So Cindy, I noticed that right before the meeting too, and I did pull up that list. I don't know if I can send it to you. Maybe you can broadcast it when we get to that point or I can definitely have Leah send another PDF version of it to everybody after the meeting. Or I could pull it up on my screen, something, but I, I did notice that it didn't print well.
Well, let, let's try having you pulled up on your screen. I don't know whether that will give us the kind of visibility necessarily, but yes, the follow through to have a PDF sent to the committee as a whole. So that they can go ahead and record that and keep it with their package or be able to view it. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just going to go through the packet. And so we're starting with the general fund, the fire department. I'd like to point out here, if you look at the revenue in this fund, this is going to be across the board that it's lagging a little bit. We have not received a whole lot of property taxes for the general fund yet this year. I think it's just lagging a little bit and we'll probably start receiving checks here shortly. So the revenue is just across the board and the general fund is going to be a little bit low for this time of year. So I wanted to point that out as well as just going through here, I think, you know, we're, we're at the beginning of our fiscal year. I don't really see much in the fire department that is what we weren't expecting or not on track for the year. You can see on page 16, what I pointed out with the fuel station computer replacement, all of those are approved projects. And there hasn't been much expended on them yet. And, but we are moving along in the fire department. I'm going to go through the general fund and then I'll take questions. And or if that works.
Um, I, well, I, I have one question. It's just it's on page 13 and it's just representative of a number, but the question is more is more specific in that. The, the uniform allowance, which apparently it's, it's a low percentage, but it's also a low dollar value. But it brings to mind. My question is that the recent contract that was accepted by our new fire chief has a uniform allowance associated with that, with his coming on board. Is that something that records as an expense in this category? Or does that end up being handled in the same way that is already recorded? Yes.
I'm calling in my team.
Yeah.
So generally speaking, with uniform allowances for each individual that has that in their SEIU MOU or IAFF MOU agreement. And in the case of the employment contract of the fire chief, that is provided to the employee on the first payroll of the new fiscal year. So, and that is part of this clear's budget. So the, the new fire chief's contract replicates a lot of the same things that were in the prior fire chief's contract. And one of those things that stayed in both contracts is the $1,000 uniform allowance.
Okay.
So at the point in time when that is, when that employee starts, it'll have to be paid at that point in time. And it'll be paid off cycle of the normal July. Moving forward in future fiscal years, it would be the first full, the first payroll of the new fiscal year is when all the uniform allowances will be paid. So this one will kind of be off kilter just a hair.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize for the delay, Ms. Fritz, please continue.
Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do it either way where we can, questions throughout are, is perfectly fine. While they're fresh in our, our mind. So I'm, I'm going to move on to the, our facilities and resource department. Same comment about the revenue that's being collected. And, you know, it's kind of a good thing. Everything's moving along. Of course, there's no real variances to point out in this department. And unless anyone has any questions specifically about facility and resources. Um, I would say the same for our parks and rec space. And Pam, please jump in if you have anything to add. You know, we have, you can see under the budget adjustment, number 18, we have, well, it's fuel station computer replacement. That is, that's a large amount represented of revenue for our grant for each East Ranch restroom that is budgeted in the, in the fund under the 617 account that 352,504 is the East Ranch restroom project. So that revenue is offsetting that project. Again, you have to review your, your translation map.
I, I do have a question that I actually will probably need to direct to Ms. Duffield since she probably has the history on this. And this is related to page 25. And it's the project contribution on the skate park. So the current total budget because of inconferences that have rolled forward, I'm assuming, the full 178,000 that the CCSD was going to contribute over basically a three-year period towards that project is, is that complete and inclusive to that 230,000?
So if you recall, when the budget adjustment was approved in fiscal year 2122 for the first 59,000 of that, remember it was a series of three years totaling the 178. So that has been taken out of reserves. So you're not going to see that in the budgeted revenue. Where you're going to see that in the budgeted revenue. Where you're going to see that is going to be the net at the end. It's gonna be put the fund in a deficit. If you just looked at the skate park budget as a total, you'll see the roll forward come in. Let's see what page that's on. Sorry, this is landscape. So kind of towards the middle of page twenty, what page am I on? So I'm doing this via a PDF on page twenty-five. Down in the category that says sixty-one seventy. It says capital assets pros department. And then you have your capital asset skate park, your two of three reserve funding. You see the budget right there for fifty-nine thousand. And then below that, the second line of the carry forward, the fifty-three four ninety-seven. That is what was unspent of the previous year's fifty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. So those two components are carrying forward what the current budget is. There was this, there was a permitting fee that was offset on that fifty-nine thousand dollars from last year. And in addition, we should just keep in mind that the money that you see up above in revenue. Where is the line item where it says project contribution skate park? That is the money that is coming from Skate Cambria via the Cambria Community Council that was done per an MOU to hold all of the donations that Skate Cambria was receiving. So as we have expenditures that are occurring per the agreement, Skate Cambria is going to be paying fifty percent of those costs.
Okay.
So you'll you'll be seeing that we put it in a line items special and specific so that it could call out the project contributions and not be commingled with anything else. So it's just
No, I appreciate that. That's excellent. Okay.
So does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Make sure I didn't forget anything.
No, I think that covered it very well.
Yeah. And it's it's easy to see right now in the six one seven account. You can see under fiscal activity, we've spent six thousand five hundred dollars. I'm on the same page twenty-five. And so it's it's pretty transparent now to see that project contribution line. We have, we've gotten half of that in. It might not be as easy to see that detail once we start spending maybe for other projects out of the six one seven account. But so far this year, that's all been spent out of there is for the skate park. So you can see what Pam's referring to is us trying to call it out and make it pretty clear what contributions we're getting.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to our administrative department. And again, I don't have any large items to call out through a variance. I feel as if we are, you know, the the year is still kind of getting rolling. So does anyone have any specific questions about the administrative budget? And you know, it does show an unfavorable balance right now, but that's just we have not received our property checks, checks. So it's not, it's not anything to worry about.
I do have a question.
Yes.
My question is on the franchise fees. Is that going to get updated with the new trash?
I am not aware of our franchise fee agreement changing at all. Pam, maybe you are aware. I I wasn't anticipating with the new trash agreement for that to change our budgeted franchise fees.
So for revenue, we don't, we can bring revenue in without a budget. So, you know, I'm not, I don't think we have a plan to amend the franchise fees due to the rate increase that just occurred. What will happen is we'll just have more revenues than what was budgeted at the end of the fiscal year. But the franchise fees will increase because they're based on a percentage of the revenue that is collected by the hauler. So the franchise fees will probably see an increase at the time we did the budget. And we didn't have that outcome. So we could not predict, you know, any additional revenue that would be coming forward.
Thanks.
That answer your question, Cheryl?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Fritz.
All right. So I'm going to move on to our enterprise fund summaries. If anyone has any additional questions about admin or the general fund in total. Okay, so we're going to start with the water department. And I apologize, this is my first packet I put together and I you got an email from Leah. I don't know if you saw it, but page, after your packet, page thirty-seven to thirty-eight, there was a page missing.
Right. And I think we've already, yeah, we've already prized the the board members of that. So we're committee members of that. So we're all set, I think.
Yes. So that first page, it is sent to you. So you can have it in your packet. It's just showing the revenue. And we're on track. And, you know, our enterprise funds are based upon the fees that are paid. So as we're doing our billing cycles every other month, that number is is on track. And, you know, there are, you know, that whole, all the M and R projects that you see on here, I'm in our lines. I would say that most projects have not started. So we're seeing slow movement on those expenses, but everything so far is in line with the budget and planned expenditures. So if anyone has any questions about a specific line item in water, on the bottom of page forty, you can see our budget adjustment for that Santa Rosa well, number four replacement project. As well as on number forty-one, there are quite a few line items of projects that we did bring forward. And they have that standard description. So if you went back to page sixty-four, you'd be able to see all of those line items that are under the water for the different projects. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay. So then moving on to the WRF fund. There's nothing of note to call out that is happening. The budget adjustment on that for the for for that fund is the two months of opera operation. Two months of operations that are held. That is what that number represents, that five hundred and thirty-three thousand. Oh.
As long as we're on on the WRF operations. Do we have any plans to actually operate it? And have we been doing the in-stream flow study and you know, running it for for that purpose? And where do we stand with the WRF?
Well, perhaps Ms. Duffield or Ms. Fritz could could answer, but I don't know. I mean, you probably, I think it's probably appropriate to direct that question to Mr. D'Anzo. Particularly as it relates to the inflight in-stream flow study. Because
I'm just trying to get an idea of what, you know, what costs we're incurring, what costs have we incurred and what costs do we anticipate to incur? In this this year.
So I mean, for this year, I think this budget is what we're anticipating incurring. It don't have, you know, a long range budget that I'm aware of that we have. So I can't. But this, this is the budget for this year. I do know that that inflow stream study is how is they are working on it. But that is the limit of my knowledge, right? And Pam might know more. I just know that those expenses are coming through for the in-inflow stream study. And as far as their plans of operating it, I'm not sure. Pam, do you have anything to add?
So I don't really have an update from Ray. I can text him and try to get that before we're done with the conversation or have him come into the meeting to answer the question. We just don't know the technical side of, you know, what their plan for testing and operations is. I know in the budget, they did put like the RO media install and certain things that they were putting in there. And some in chemicals, they put the media preservation and those kinds of things. We've seen activity on those lane items. But as far as you know, if they're having to start up the system to test it and and those kinds of technical details. You know, Denise, or I really don't have that expertise. That's really Mr. D'Anzo. So I'd be happy to text him and see if he could join the meeting to answer your question.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I will do that. Something I would like to point out on this page while we're here. So if you see the very last line item, line item sixty-six two hundred, that is a line for the two-month reserve for operations. So if you think back to our colored worksheets, and I could list this on the colored worksheets because it was an Excel format, though it's sitting in reserve in a reserve account. So in this new format using Tyler, we can only utilize and see for these budget to actual reports, revenue and expenses. So we talked about this a little bit during the budget process. And that we were going to create an account for transparency purposes only. Just to highlight where we sit with that two-month reserve. Because remember, for a couple of years, we have not ran the system to utilize any of those reserves. If we do need to run the system, there would need to be board action to take those reserve dollars and program them up for use. So this line item that you're seeing on the budget again is just for transparency so that, you know, the board and the public finance committee, everybody can see how much we've set aside for that two months of operations. So I just wanted to point that out since it is visible on the report now.
That's really somewhat at the heart of my question because we're now at seven hundred thousand dollars. And you know, that's it, I guess we don't really know what it's going to cost when we when we do operate the system, but you know, are we going to keep keep setting aside numbers like this and and just build up enormous, enormous reserves without without ever using them?
Right.
Something to 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 consider eventually as a recommendation to the board that they may want to consider a cap on that reserve. Considering the amount of reserve that has been building. In addition, in in a broad sense, in operating the facility, probably the the larger impact to that is has to do with the with the Brian.
Is the issue, the biggest part of the issue. And, you know, so until we until we actually operate the system in in anger, will we won't, we won't really quite know what the, you know, what the utilization of the reserves is going to be. But it's you know, seven hundred thousand dollars is starting to get to be a lot of money.
And and frankly, that could be, that could be a recommendation that the committee may want to consider in review of the budget.
We need, we need more information before we could make a recommendation.
Okay.
Pam? Cindy?
Yes.
On the on the reserves itself, is that include the litigation money that we received, the lawsuit money?
No, this is the expenditure side of the reserve for operations, the two-month reserve.
No, I'm talking about in in the actual revenue.
So the the litigation funds are sitting in Fund Forty, not Fund Thirty-nine. This is thirty-nine. So this is the operational fund of WRF. So the litigation proceeds that were received are sitting in the reserves in Fund Forty. You don't see that on this report because this is budget revenue versus expenditures. And you don't see the reserves on these reports.
Well, thank you, Pam. Okay, and so moving along to Fund Forty.
Can I, can I interrupt for just a quick moment?
Yes.
So Ray is now in our meeting. If you want to go back and have him, we can bring him in as a panelist, maybe?
All right. I don't know that I have the ability to do that. Let's see.
You should if you're a host, you should have little dots next to his name.
I do. And actually, it was promote to panelist.
Yep, perfect.
And allowed to talk.
Awesome.
There we go. All right. Good morning, Ray. Thank you for joining us. I appreciate it. Mr. Seigler had a question relative to the in-stream flow study and to the WRF.
Well, yes, it's more about operation of the WRF. Are we doing anything to operate it? Or are we just maintaining it in standby mode? And the info, so I recall the in-stream flow study required that we would be drawing water out of the lower, lower basin and and simulating the the operation. Then we you know, part, part of my question comes around to the the size of the reserves that we now have set aside for during non-operating years and you know, to do we plan to actually operate the system at this point? Or are we just piling up another year of reserves?
Okay, yeah. So first, yeah, first of all, the the easy question to answer is the in-stream flow study. We we did talk about operating originally operating it to to get some simulated pumping action with the, you know, with the WRF.
Uh, pumping action uh with the, you know, with the WRF operating, but. That, that idea was nixed uh mainly due to um. Uh, the Coastal Commission had concerns about us operating it uh even in a um. Yeah, even in a test situation, so that, that idea was nixed a long, a long time ago. Um, we, the only, the only. Times that we operate the system is usually just for testing, uh, you know, we, we run flushing water through the filters. Uh, or just regular water through the filters, but we don't do any, we don't inject it to the, the groundwater table. We just, we have a permit to actually dispose of that water in our perp ponds. So uh, those are the only, those are the only times that we operate it. We don't operate it um. You know, for uh, you know, the way, the way it's supposed to be operated. It's just for testing mode. Uh, we did install the, the RO filters in there, so uh, you know, there's gonna be more. Uh, circulation uh due to, to that to keep the, the membranes from fouling. Um, the other, the, the, the other question you had there regarding, you know, is basically an opinion of mine. I don't think we'll operate it this year. Just based on the, the data and the groundwater levels that we're, we're seeing, that the trends that we're seeing. I, I don't anticipate us running it this year. I um. And, you know, the, with, with the, with the wet season coming up, you know, if, if there, if we do get some rains, we most likely won't. Uh, operate it next year either, so um, that's. But again, you know, that, that's an opinion and a forecast on my part.
Yeah, do, do you have any updates on what the cost of Brian hauling is, would likely be? When, when and if we actually do operate?
Uh, the, the actual disposal of the Brian, the, the, the contract hasn't changed with South County, San, San District. Uh, we did get some quotes on, on the trucking. Um, I, I don't have that uh pulled up. But it's, that, that's, that, that's actually the um. Uh, it, it wasn't really that much different from, you know, i- it wasn't like, you know, orders of magnitude different from uh, from what we. We've uh, we've estimated in the past, so yeah, the, the prices definitely have gone up. And um. You know, the cost of fuel and, and all of that is what's, what's driving it. Um, and hopefully when, you know. If the cost of fuel were, were to stabilize, you know, th- those prices would, would adjust um some, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, anyone else says Mr. D'Anzo is. Available to us for a few minutes here. Okay, all right, thank you very much, Ray, for uh being available to answer some questions. Fair much appreciated.
Okay, um. So we went over the WRF operations budget and now moving on to the um, WRF capital budget. You can see um, there are few expenses that are budgeted in there, the section seven ESA. And our um, our fuel station computer line item right there for ninety-six thousand. Is representative again at this section, um, in, uh, section seven ESA. So that, that account number uh kind of helps with the description there. Are there any questions on? The WRF capital account? Okay. Um, then moving on to our wastewater fund. As you can see, the revenues are coming in. Um, this is. Pam, are we on the second billing cycle we just went through of the year?
Correct. What you see in this report is reflective of the July-August billing cycle.
Okay, so just one cycle.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Yes, because we just completed our, our second billing cycle. Um. So moving down um and looking, again, there's a lot of um different ma-maintenance and repair. Type items that have been budgeted for this year. There's um not. Um, as you can see, there's a lot of line items that still have a hundred percent of their budget left, uh, so. There's nothing of. Big concern to um. Point out on the bottom of page fifty-five, you can see there's quite a few line items for projects that we carried forward. And so those will be detailed out on that sheet on page sixty-four. Um, does anyone have any questions specifically about the wastewater fund?
I do not see any hands.
Okay. So. I'm going to share my screen here with you all, so hopefully you can see it. This is the CIP list that we, that is not printing out well in your packets. Um, I don't know if you all can see this, and I will definitely um get this to you um right after the meeting. Um. And Pam, if you can help me out if I'm misstating anything, um, so we have our general fund. Um. And CIP, construction in progress, these are things that have been approved. Um. And a lot of the, them, the, a lot of these projects are the ones that we carried forward from last year. You can see here, we have the sixty-five hundred dollars for the skate park improvements, which we saw. Um, under the, the pros and we got, but we also, you know, got fifty percent of those expenses um. Reimbursed to us and we have, the fire department has so far spent twenty-four thousand approximately on their. Radio system upgrade phase two, other than that, um. These projects are outstanding and then wastewater projects. I believe all of these are in the PG&E. IGA project that we just got funding for, is that correct, Pam?
A portion of them are because we received twelve point one million dollars in funding and this is representative of about fifteen million. So there are some of the projects that were included in this list.
Yes.
Can, can that be separated out? Pam, can those projects be separated out?
Um, I think we have it separated a little bit. We can subtotal it, so if you look at the notes column.
Mm-hmm.
Those above are the ones that were in the final IGA and these other ones are the other projects.
Go back to the um, the other page. There was some grant money. That was supposed to be received for the electric vehicle charging station and um. The, the, the other one was the radio system for the firefighters. I believe those were under grants, weren't they?
So the electric charging system grant was received last fiscal year.
Yes.
That did happen.
So why is it on there?
Because this is expenses for the current fiscal year. It is not representative of revenue. The CIP list is just an expenditure list. And then as far as the radio system upgrade.
Yes.
Uh, for the fire station. There is a um grant from the county. So this twenty-four thousand dollar expenditure that you're seeing is just representative of the receipt. Of the actual um equipment that was received. It still has to be programmed. And um, all of that has to be completed. The grant itself, I believe, is thirty thousand dollars. So there's still a little bit of work to be done before we can go ahead and build a county for the completed project. So that is still in, in process.
Is Stewart Street Tank on here?
That's jumping over to water.
Okay.
I believe Stewart Street Tank is on here somewhere. There it is.
There it is, right there.
Okay, that is currently something that was carried forward in the budget process. On the water fund, we saw that as a carry forward.
But there's been a, there's been monies from the county or from grants for that project.
I'm not aware that there's.
You've received nothing?
I'm not aware that there's a grant. Is that the, you, is that the United States congressional grant?
Yes.
So that information, we are still waiting on. That grant has not, um, did we put it in the budget? I have to go back to the.
It's not on the reserve list, on the carry forward list.
It might be, I think it was new grant that we put in the budget for this fiscal year. I don't believe it was a carry forward. Let me double check. I'm going back to the water pages. It would be in the four thousand series. Oh, we don't have the water page, so.
It got emailed to you and I, but I do, I see that we did budget three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That's it, yeah. So that did not get carried forward. That was budgeted um new for this fiscal year. But again, we have not received the information from the granting entity on how we. Um, go about claiming those funds. I think it's still in process in the federal financial system.
Hey. That's scary. Thank you.
Anything else, Cheryl?
Well, I, I have a list of things, Cindy. I'm not ready to. I do have some items um in my mind that I'd like to discuss when we're ready.
Well, it, it depends on what, what it is that you want to discuss. Are they related to the CIP?
Um, no.
Are they related to pages we've already gone over?
Sorta. Future business, Cindy. Future items that I'd like to talk about.
Future in, in what way? In terms of work content or in terms of financial impacts or what?
Okay, so I'll, I'll just tell you what's on my mind and I've talked about this before. I, I, I would like to see the legal bills broken out into departments. I'd like to see, I was really um. When Michael Castellanos talked about the union, the firefighters' union and the safer grant. That was, that was, that hit home to me and I'd like to see some of these reserves. That we get from franchise fees or from whatever, put into a separate account for these firefighters. For to fund this, so we don't have to go through this again. And um. Those are, those are my main two things that I would like to see on future items. And then you talked about the um project out there on St. Simeon Creek Road. And maybe we can um freeze some of those funds, put a, put a cap. On, 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 on what's being in the reserves there. You know, that was a very good idea that came up. And then I'd like to talk about the house that sits out in Van Gordon Creek Road. I mean, that, that's an asset that has just gone to the wayside. And if there's a water meter on it. Those are my thoughts, Cindy.
Okay, well, everything that you're asking about here. Really are probably questions you need to direct at the board level. Because the finance.
They're all financial.
I, I understand that, but that doesn't mean that, that this committee has any authority to define or influence any of that. They don't.
But the chair can.
That's fine, then directed at the board level.
So we don't direct it to you as the chair of the committee?
No, because the committee itself doesn't have the authority to take action on any of it, so bringing it to the committee is not of value.
Well, so basically, bear with me here, Cindy. Basically, what we've seen on our reports have been quarterlies. Basically, we're, we're, we're a volunteer group to just approve quarterlies and not to bring any, any suggestions. I'm sorry for being outspoken, but these are things that are on my mind.
And, and, and I appreciate that they're on your mind or that you have questions about them. I'm trying to explain to you that this group, this committee, doesn't have the authority. To take on the actions that you're describing. If you have questions, if you have questions about them, then I suggest that you address them at the board, board level.
And it'll go, it, it will just be put to the side, like, you know, it just will go nowhere.
Well, Ms. McDowell, I guess you should run for the board and change it then.
Well, maybe new board members as well.
Thank you. Are you, are you finished with your dissertation?
You're so disrespectful, Cindy. You were so disrespectful to Michael when he had his remark and you told him the safer grant. That was so rude of you, your, your attitude toward that safer grant. When it's over, it's over. Go get another job. You were very disrespectful.
I'm sorry that you interpreted it that way because that it wasn't the part of it that I was addressing.
Thank you, Cindy. I'm done.
All right, thank you, Ms. McDowell. All right, are there any other questions or um do we have additional pieces of the CIP to take a look at or this review? So I'll bring it back to you, Ms. Duffield and, and Ms. Fritz, yes.
Yeah, here's the.
Mr. Seagler?
Yeah, I am. My, I guess I, I have comments about, about the, the whole, uh, whole package, so if we're not done with the um. With the CIP list, let's, let's finish that first.
Okay.
Um, I, I mean, here's the water. I just, since you don't have it in front of you, I, I'll just. Um, these are the, the ones highlighted in yellow are the reallocation requests from um the staff report that you can see. Um, and then the water, just, just showing them, here's the Santa Rosa for, well, number four replacement. Showing that we've spent forty-eight thousand dollars. Um. So if anyone wants to see anything more closely, and I will be sending this in a PDF as a follow-up after the meeting. Other than that, I think that I am done.
Let's see. Okay. Um, we do have the page on the reserve for encumbrance requests. Is there anything there that needs to be highlighted or?
Um, no, that page was in, that, that page was included this time just to help you all. Track those budget adjustments that had, got the same description. So you can go to this page to see what those dollar amounts actually represent. That, that is what this page was included for.
Right. So, um, Mr. Seagler?
Okay, um. I, I've got uh actually a number of, number of things. The first one is, is, is just the uh. Software glitch issue. Uh, and I sure hope you can get that fixed pretty quickly because uh. The purpose of this report is to be able to inform the uh. Board and the public. And it's, it's a very difficult thing to try to track between page sixty-four and page ten. You know, uh, you, you know, that's a, that's just, it's. It, it needs to get fixed. Uh, but that's a, that's a very. Uh, but that's, uh, that's a very, uh, technical issue, I guess. Uh, the more philosophical things are, you know, one of the things that we've done in the past, and I know the Tyler in code system doesn't lend itself to it, is, uh, tracking against the assumptions from the rate studies that are driving the rates for, for enterprise funds. And, um, I, I wouldn't propose that we do anything on a line item basis. But at, at some sort of aggregate basis, I think it would be an important addition to, to this package. Uh, and I'll give you, give you my examples here. If we're just looking at the, at the capital, in our April meeting, when we were dealing with the third quarter, budget report, the SST was ten, ten point four million dollars. The rate study was twelve million dollars. And now, uh, both the year end and this October is fifteen point one million dollars. So we've got, we've got a real issue that needs to be highlighted and discussed. When, uh, our rates were set with an assumption of twelve million dollars spent for these projects. And now we're spending fifteen million dollars or anticipating spending fifteen. And the, uh, you know, across the board, the, uh, CIP has gone up. And so I would, I would think that, uh, having something that, that tracks major, uh, categories of expenditure to the rate studies. And then a discussion of what does the district intend to do to fill this gap? You know, because I, I'm not sure whether the rates will support it. Uh, I, I have a real concern about that. The other thing that I think needs to be in these packages on a quarterly basis is an update to the reserve page using the current budget. Because right now we've got to do a lot of mental arithmetic to try to figure out whether the encumbrances that are being brought forward are, uh, which then drive, uh, you know, operating deficits, whether they're actually covered by the reserves or whether we're using more of the reserve or less of the reserve than we had anticipated using. And so, uh, so I think, I think, you know, those two things are big gaps between, uh, you know, a set of numbers and an actual picture of what the, uh, district financial health is.
At, at this point, um, again, because of the historic knowledge, uh, Ms. Duffield, or is there anything that you, um, have to, to offer say in this regard, particularly since you have the, probably the better background in terms of Tyler and its execution and, and formulating some of the comparisons that, uh, Mr. Seagull was talking about?
And we don't have the ability to, um, present something similar to what we did in the previous rate increase. So in the twenty eighteen Prop two eighteen rate increase, we were working with the budget to actual with those green and white colored pages. And we were able to insert a column in those pages to do a comparative for, you know, what our budget looks like in that particular fiscal year versus what the rate increase projected. So we are thinking about how we present that in just a single page format. Moving forward, it's going to have to be something that we manually, um, prepare. But we are working for that, towards that. So just keep in mind, all alone, just closed on the twentieth of October. So we've been pretty inundated in reviewing hundreds and hundreds of pages of paper. You know, one day we might be asked to review it, two hundred pages. And then there's updates to it. And then the following day we get asked to review the update. So we've kind of been, um, you know, drowning in paper review or PDF paper review. So, so we, we are, we are thinking of it. Another, another point I'd like to make is that when we prepared the budget for wastewater and for water, we didn't necessarily know the outcome of the rate increase. And we for sure didn't know the outcome of how the financing was going to take place. How much were we going to get financed? You know? What projects were we going to be able to accomplish? What ones can't we accomplish? So we think, um, the general manager, the finance manager and I have all talked and talked with utilities manager. And once they're funded and we know what's funded for the IGA projects, we talked about going back to scratch, um, on the wastewater budget and revisiting the entire budget and making sure that our budget is aligned to be able to pay the debt service that we need to pay the share because that is not inclusive of our budget because we didn't know what the debt service was going to be for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So, you know, there is a lot of homework that we have to do at this first quarter. We just haven't had the opportunity to do that.
Yes, it's not just, it's not just water. The rate study had a ten-year projection of, or wastewater, I mean, the rate study had a ten-year projection for the water department of eight point five million dollars and now we're at nine point five. You know, so, you know, there's, there are, uh, increases in the capital project assumptions. And we, we need to, we need to be able to, uh, to quantify those and, uh, you know, be able to, you know, go back and do the homework you're talking about, Pam. Uh, you know, exactly what can we do and how are we going to do it? And, uh, you know, but I, I think it comes down to actually a fairly small number of things. I think you could just pick off a revenue line and operating expense line and, and capital. And, uh, and make the comparisons based on that. And you'd have all the information you need and it would be a pretty simple spreadsheet to put together. You know, but the, the more difficult part is, okay, now that we have, uh, you know, a blended, interest rate of around, say, four and a half percent. How, how does that compare with the assumptions that went into the, uh, into the rate study and, and particularly over the next three or four years? It's, it's, I, I don't think it's uh, sufficient to think about just this fiscal year because uh, the, the impacts are, are going to really be biting us in twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, and the, um, you know, our ability to raise rates is going to be probably somewhat limited for the next three years or so.
Well, the, the underlying, the underlying rate study took that into consideration. That's why that had to all be put into place before there was the action to go out and establishing the, the funding stream. And the rate study.
Rate studies had twelve million dollars for the SST projects and now we're at fifteen point one. So.
No, it's always.
Take into.
I, I think in, in some respects, maybe having Ray back here at the time, we, we recognized um, that fifteen point one was not something that we would be in a position to obtain.
Yeah.
And so it was the, the, the focus was narrowed down to some absolutes. And those absolutes were targeted for the twelve million. So that's what's been the target all along. Now we recognize that there are requirements past the twelve million. But the rate study itself established the baseline for revenue to cover the, the cost of being able to get the twelve million dollars. And there is actually some, some element of, of monies that ride along with that that the rates brought to us that we're going to be able to, over time, take on some of the other projects. And I don't, Ms. Duffield, is that a, a reasonable? Are those reasonable statements that I've just made?
Right. You're correct. You're absolutely correct. And that was our methodology. And that's what was brought to the board as well.
And that's, we, we've gone, we've gone over these, these things in, in reviewing the rate study information and in discussion at the board meetings.
Yeah, well, you know, as a, as a member of a finance committee, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the package that we've just received. And I think there's a gap between what we actually can do and what's included in this package. You know, we've got twenty, twenty, almost twenty-two million dollars of capital expenditures for the, um, for the wastewater plant on the capital summaries for the, you know, the ten-year projection. And that's only going to increase. It's not, it's not, you know, it's not, uh, it's not capped. And, uh, the rate study was based on having sixteen and a half million dollars. So we're, we're already five million dollars, five and a half million dollars more than what was in the rate study. And I, I realize we'll have rates reviewed again in, in a few years. But the, uh, the, the problem that I'm looking at is that, uh, you know, we, we have, we have these documents that we're sending, sending to the board, representing our best thinking about what the district's needs are. And, uh, the, the gap is, is something that we can't, we can't bridge.
Well, if you go back to the genesis of the whole IGA process, that twenty-two million dollars was something that was generated on a, um, let's make it shiny and bright and put silver plating on it. Frankly, I mean, it wa, it was something that, um, was, um, it was probably, and it was offset to some extent by savings in, um, electricity and some other things. But in, in, in general, it was, well, actually, this conversation is better coming from, from Ray, but there's a genesis that went along with it, um, back to the time, um, uh, well, what's been at least, what, three years, four years ago? So that, that twenty-two million dollars and, and trying to hang our hats on what that twenty-two million dollars represents, I think, is, is not necessarily something that needs to be the immediate focus. The immediate focus probably is the fifteen million dollars. And frankly, it's an aging plant and we're going to get as much done as quickly as we can with resources that we can get to. And where we'll have to react to other things that may come up. And I think that can't be solidified in any way. I mean, that's, that's reality.
We have almost seven million dollars that's not part of the SST process at this point. And, uh, you know, that's up from third quarter of last year at two and a half million dollars and the rate study at four and a half million dollars. So, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not just the SST process. It's, uh, it's the lift stations and, and the, um, other, other parts of the system.
Well, we can have Mr. Dianzo join us again to help explain, explain that and explain the thinking that went on. I mean.
I'm not arguing with whether, whether these things are good projects or not. And that's, that's not, that's not my issue. My issue is how is the district going to bridge the gap between the resources that we've planned for? And the, uh, expenditures that we are projecting based on, based on this package that we're sending to the board?
Well, this package, though, this package that we're sending to the board is review of the first quarter budget.
Right.
I, it, it is, it is not a final budget at the year end to potentially bring a challenge of what, what, uh, what will happen in a future period? It's, the, the questions that you have are valid. The reality of being able to address them here, probably, again, I would say if, that's, if, if you have a suggestion on how that will be accomplished as a recommendation to the board, I think that that should be carried forward. If you feel that, you know, we should, you know, strike out to, you know, change, you know, to be more assertive in rates, to bring in additional revenue flow, or if we're supposed to be looking for some other methodology of defining revenue, then, you know, by all means, let's, let's consider it and, and pass that information to the board. But um, frankly, you know, pointing, pointing out those differences is, is not something that is new information.
Well, it's, okay, I'm, I'm trying to address this package and I, I think it's incomplete.
Okay. Well, what would you like to see different? What would you like to see different?
What I would like to see differently is that there be some tracking between the assumptions that went into the rate study driving the rates, which are going to be supporting the enterprise. And what our, our current thinking is. And the, uh, I, I, I sympathize with what Pam was saying about being in the middle of reviewing all the documents. I've done that kind of thing myself and, and it's, uh, it's very difficult to, uh, sort of stretch to, uh, get everything done when you're, you're in the middle of doing a financing. So, uh, so that I think there really should be a promissory note that, uh, the district staff is going to go back and you know, if, if you were going to present a comparison that I'm asking for, uh, that the district staff will then go back and work on how to fit the package of things that we need to do into the resources that are available. And, uh, I think that it's got to be a longer term than just one quarter at a time. And then I think that, uh, the package needs to have a, an update to the reserve spreadsheet based on the current budget column. based on the current budget column. So that we, we know whether we actually have sufficient cash to be doing the things that we're planning to do this year. So that's, that's, that's what I, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, well, I, in some respects, that's, I think that is a reiteration of the three items that you listed out before, if I'm not mistaken. So I think that Pam and Denise are probably more than fully aware of them. And Pam had indicated that there were two actions that they were already taking to work toward that. So I, I, I appreciate that you have an awareness of what what efforts went forward in terms of obtaining the, the recent twelve million dollars. But there also isn't an entire department that sits below what Pam and Denise are doing. And I, it isn't a matter of stretching. It's like you can only give a hundred and twenty percent. So I, I appreciate the fact that it isn't made, it isn't coming as quickly as you want it to. But I think Ms. Duffield also has indicated that there, that it isn't laying fallow and it's an awareness. And she's outlined the actions that they're trying to take. And it may not be happening as quickly. But she, she and Ms. Fritz are, are working towards those things. Unless you feel that there's something you can describe that will change the overall process to make it happen faster.
But that's, that's why I say, you know, use the term promissory note because it's not. I, I, I know it's not practical to, to have that, to have all of that done now. But, but I think there needs to be a promise that it will be done. That's, again, my opinion.
Okay.
They, you know, I think it's important.
I agree. And I, I also, I also have confidence in, in the folks who have men have described that they're trying to work towards something and to get it there and hopefully have some time available or, or have an increment of time available to, to advance those things. So perhaps by the, some status reports in between, by the time we reach the second quarter budget report, some of those could be available for review processes for the group. If that's satisfactory.
Up to Pam, what they can, or Denise, what they can do. I'm not.
Pam?
I just have one added comment to make. So if you look at the reserve worksheet, that's attached to the final budget. That worksheet did include all of the carryforward encumbrances that were requested of the board. And it did update the estimated reserve balances as of June thirty of twenty-twenty-three. What is not included in that final budget would be the seventy-five thousand dollars that was newly approved by the board in the middle of July. So that was kind of like outside the final budget process. And that would have affected the wastewater. I'm sorry, it was the water department's ending reserve balance. That seventy-five thousand dollars would not have been included in there. But everything else thus far through the end of September is included in that final budget reserve worksheet. So there's, there's not much change that's taken place since that time.
Yeah, that's, that's great. You know, being able to see it, it, you know, would, would be helpful. I, I guess I was assuming that that was likely to be the case. But, you know, not having the, the worksheet in the package raised the question.
Yeah, we customarily have not included that in the quarterly report packet. When we do go to the board for a budget adjustment throughout the fiscal year and we do request being funded that budget adjustment from reserves, we will cite the reserve balance estimate at that point to the board. But, you know, historically, we've only presented that reserve worksheet during the preliminary and final processes of the budget itself. We haven't included that in a quarterly report.
If you could include it in quarterly reports, I'd, I'd recommend it.
Okay, I made a note.
Okay. So I believe we are at the end of the review of the first quarter budget then. So we're in the position of passing along our recommendation to the board. So unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion for that regarding recommendation, Board of Directors to receive and file the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three first quarter budget report and approve the proposed budget reallocations. So it seems that we have at least one recommendation that you made, Mr. Seagull, and that was to make the reserve for encumbrance requests be formally part of each quarterly budget presentation. Is, is that a true statement?
Well, that's, that would be my, my recommendation. I, I don't know whether it's practical for this report, so. I wouldn't want to try to presume what, what can be done in, in the short time that's available between now and presenting it.
Well, that's already, I mean, the, the page that we were just speaking to is what I was understanding, the page sixty-four. And Ms. Duffield said that initially, that's not something that happened on a quarterly budget basis. And you were suggesting that, I, I was hearing that you were going to make the recommendation that that be included in each.
No, it's not, it's not what's on page sixty-four. It's the, it's the reserve summary.
Right.
That.
It was the last page of the, yeah, it was the last.
Budget, the.
Right, okay.
Updated for the current. And so would, would pick up that seventy-five thousand dollar.
Right.
Item, for instance. But that's, I, you know, I, I wouldn't want, I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make work for anybody. I'm, I'm just trying to trying to say what has, you know, in my experience, what I think a package needs to do is address things that that are, you know, that, that, that tell you what, where, where our cash is and is, is going to be and the, the highlight gaps between what our expectations and resource availabilities are going to be versus what our you know, what our desires are.
Well.
And I, you know, it's not, it's.
So I guess the question is.
It's not appropriate to be, to do that for this, for this package because, you know, it's.
Oh, I agree.
Back and thinking, thinking about it. So that's, but I, I do, I am concerned.
Well, okay, I, I had the, the so actually, I'll tell you what, why don't you and I and Ms. Duffield and Ms. Fritz have an opportunity to have a conversation? And we can lay out some specifics and discuss the, the, the probability of working toward that and when it can be incorporated.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. So I just committed, Pam and Denise just committed you to something, so. I apologize, but.
I'll, I'll, I'll lock something up and, and send it to the three of you.
All right.
So that, so you don't have to do, you know, extra work to try to, try to accommodate what I'm looking for until, until we have a chance to discuss it anymore.
Okay, okay, sounds good. All right, well, then I go, I'll go back to the original conclusion for the Finance Committee making recommendation to the Board of Directors to receive and file the FY twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three first quarter budget report. And to, again, this is our recommendation, approve the proposed budget reallocations. So.
I can move. So move.
Okay, and the second? Mary, all right, so moved by Marvin and seconded by Mary. All right, word vote, Mr. Corn.
Aye.
And Ms. Marha?
Aye.
All right, Ms. McDowell?
No.
All right, and Ms. Christman?
Aye.
And Mr. Seagull?
Oh, yes.
All right, the vote is four to one, the dissension from Ms. McDowell. Right. With that, then we will move to the last agenda item, which is review of the committees. Review and update the finance ad hoc committees and to look at it, all of them have been completed and closed out. With the exception of the last item, which was identify potential structural changes to address service needs. And I believe there was, there was action that, and that it's closed.
We, we produced a report. And so it can be closed. I don't think it necessarily formally was closed.
Okay. Well, with that action and with that recording of that item being closed, there remain no outstanding ad hoc committee actions. So there, I'm sure will be others that will join this over time, but for right now, we don't have any active outstanding ad hoc committees for the finance standing committee. So it appears we finished with the business that we were here for today. Unless there's any additional action or any other comments from the board members.
We got future agenda. And I think we need two status reports, one, one on the financing and one on the the audit.
I'm sorry.
The financing and the audit. Status reports on each of those. Please.
Okay, and you're, you're talking the twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two audit?
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Wait, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two, right?
Okay. Okay. Anything else? No? All right. Well, Ms. Duffield, Ms., thank you very much. Thank you for your, your initial foray into presentation of quarterly budgets, Ms. Fritz.
Thank you.
Your efforts. And Ms. Duffield, and thank you, Mr. Seagull, for the items that you brought forward for conversation. And that appears to take care of our business for the day. So we actually get out a few minutes early. So enjoy the rest. Bye-bye.
Bye, everyone. Thanks.
Bye-bye.